Good evening, I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, February 26, 2025. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poplawski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, March 12. Before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to recognize a former district employee that sadly passed away recently. Kristen Staywitch worked as a school nurse, starting as a substitute in 2007, then working part-time at Sherwood before becoming the full-time nurse at Parker Road Preschool in 2012, and at Floral Street School, starting in 2018, until she left the district in 2022. She was known for her caring demeanor, as she supported students and staff in her health office, for her wellness challenges, and her own participation in marathons and other races, and for procuring grant funds to create a garden at Parker Road. Kristen was the proud parent of two SPS graduates, Madeline, class of 2016, and Will, class of 2018. Our thoughts and condolences go out to the Staywitch family and to our former colleagues at Shrewsbury Public Schools. Please join us in a moment of silence in memory of Kristen Staywitch. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received requests to speak at public participation. However, in the future, any and all residents that wish to speak to the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and performance of the superintendent should contact the chairperson prior to the next scheduled meeting. Next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report tonight?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. And also, on behalf of the staff, I want to convey our condolences to the Staywitch family on the loss of Kristen. She was a terrific colleague, who both, in her years working at the school districts, as well as a parent, supporting her children as a volunteer over the years, made a real positive impact. And again, we're very sorry for the family's loss. I do want to cite a couple of things during superintendent's report. First, I want to thank everyone who participated in our February Vacation enrichment program for elementary grades through grade six. I had a chance to visit last Friday, and there were some terrific classes going on. Students highly engaged, everything from scientific exploration, art, games, puzzles, reading, writing, just a lot of really fun activities that were connected to really also engaging kids' minds. Thank you to Karen Isaacson for coordinating the program, her assistant, Mary Rana, and also all of the educators and paraeducators who participated, as well as many high school volunteers. We had lots of, just in the summer enrichment program, lots of Shrewsbury High School volunteer students helped us make that program a success. So I appreciate all of their work to make that happen. Also, I want to congratulate the Shrewsbury High School Mock Trial team. They've qualified for the Sweet 16, the state tournament, the final 16 teams in the state. They've done quite well this season, and we wish them well in the state tournament. Similarly, the DECA Business Club has their state tournament starting tomorrow in Boston, and we wish all of those student competitors well. We have a variety of athletic teams that have done quite well. Wanted to congratulate the boys' basketball team on winning the Central Mass Athletic Directors Tournament. Various teams have qualified for postseason play. Both the boys' and girls' basketball teams won their first playoff game last evening in a doubleheader. The boys' hockey team had a successful season, lost in their playoff game last night. The girls' hockey team's competing as we speak. And although I don't have the details in front of me, I know we've had some very successful winter track performances as well for both the boys' and girls' track teams. So congratulations to all of our student athletes on the winter season, and good luck to those who are still competing. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is under curriculum. It's a literacy initiative update, a report from Sammy Clowder, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Educators in grades K through six are actively implementing a new literacy program aligning instructional practices with the science of reading research. And grades seven and eight have selected a new curriculum to be implemented next school year. We've received a report from Ms. Clowder that shares additional information about this work, as well as data on student reading achievement. With that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Clowder, welcome.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here in the second of several meetings, I hope, to talk about literacy plan for this year and also its implications for students. So I'm going to share three main topics today. One, kind of an update around the literacy pilot in grades seven and eight. Two, a review of kind of district-wide resources that support literacy instruction, and our collective gratitude for your support of those. And then the latest student achievement results. I put this slide in, it's familiar to you, I hope. Just to remind you that when we're talking about literacy, we need to be mindful of kind of the grade level standards. So for example, we're currently implementing in K-6 both foundational reading curriculum, which are pictured here, and also curriculum that teach comprehension. And so foundational standards are in play for grades K to 2 primarily, in terms of legerdied and kind of sounding out letter names and things like that. And then we move into grades 3 to 6, and we're moving increasingly towards kind of thinking about syllables and how they work, and how to chunk and extend larger words. But when we're talking about grades seven and eight, we're leaving the foundational reading behind and looking to think about language comprehension. And so I just want to distinguish when we're talking about literacy curriculum, that there are two things in play for K-6, and really, seven and eight, we're looking at foundational, primarily not foundational reading, but language comprehension. And so as we're looking at that, it's important for us to think about, so what makes for a good language comprehension curriculum? Because there are a lot of programs that purport to teach comprehension well. And as we think about Scarborough's rope, which again, you've seen in previous presentations, it kind of talks about the components of a strong language comprehension program. If you look at that side of the reading rope, you can see that DESI, or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, would expect that a high-quality curriculum would have all of those components. And that in addition to that, that students would be tasked with work that's meaningful and rigorous. And so as part of our K-6 adoption process, you know, K-6 looked at several programs that met DESI's criteria, and then we chose some to pilot. And similarly, for grade seven and eight, we didn't want to assume that we would just adopt the same curriculum. So we had a similar process, and I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. Because, as it happens, we ended up with selecting the same program. So we're looking at this side of the rope when we're talking about grades seven and eight. And so we considered three programs, StudySync, EL Education's Language Arts, which is what we're using currently in K-6, and Amplify, which was also a contender for the K-6 process. It was a really thorough process, because each of those programs had strengths. The Amplify curriculum in particular featured some great titles. However, EL was rated higher, and the process really surfaced some things about the other programs that put them at a slight disadvantage. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But when we look at the three under contention, we really piloted both EL Education's and Amplify. And then we used teacher reviews of each program using a common evaluation tool. Again, it was a blind process, so teachers submitted their feedback to Kristen Osborne, who's the consultant that we have been working with in literacy. We observed the five different pilot classrooms that were implementing the module. And then we included student focus groups, because at Oak, that's part of our hiring process, and so we thought that that was appropriate. StudySync was eliminated as a match, because the teachers found it really dry, and it was really focused on online learning. And the combination of classroom observations and student feedback kind of elevated EL above Amplify. So here are some of the positives that were noted when we asked for teacher feedback. Again, some of those will look familiar to what we heard from K-6 teachers, and it was gratifying to see that they appreciated kind of the curriculum for 6-8, as well as the K-4 teachers have. Rich language, hands-on experiences, engaging, pushes all students, which is important to us, especially given our strategic priorities in mind, and increases the volume of reading that kids are doing. Again, they also noticed some similar challenges, like the complexity of planning and learning a new curriculum, particularly for students that needed additional support. And building a background with students that haven't experienced the curriculum before requires additional time than the pacing guide allows. So we're going to have to understand that there might be some flexibility in terms of instructional time. But mostly, I put this slide up there as a reminder for me to really acknowledge the pilot teachers that were part of the process. It was Kate Lewis and Doug Kershaw, Megan Durati, Gabby Beliveau, Sarah Heel, and Gabe Hopkins, who is an English language educator, but he played a role in kind of supporting and looking at the impact of the program on English learners. So when you think about the EL curriculum, there's a deep logic to the design in terms of how there are four modules, each module has different units. The units have a very typical progression, which means that there is a nice benefit to, like, on the one hand, we didn't want to assume that we were going with EL. On the other hand, we didn't want to ignore the common sense gain of having a program that has the same structure, K to 8. So those units build, kids engage as readers and writers, and then ultimately, a performance task. And there's a commitment to student agency inherent to those performance tasks. So kids are creating something, or they're educating other people, or they're engaging with the content and implying their understanding. And the scaffolding from grade to grade, and from the beginning of the year to the end of the year within a grade, kind of helps build student skills. But another thing that really makes it stand out is the emphasis on speaking and listening. So we talk about literacy being four domains, reading, writing being the familiar ones, but speaking and listening are really important too. And so that's part of the interactive component of the curriculum that really stands out. Again, this will be familiar to you. EL for seven and eight, just as for K-6, is really well-regarded in the field. You see the Ed Reports rating on the left here, and that's an independent, third-party reviewing panel. And then it's side-by-side with DESI's internal view of the aversion of EL that we have in play in our district right now. And again, DESI is focused on high-quality curriculum, because we know that that can result in over a half a year of additional learning. By one study, another study by the American Ed Research said the equivalent of an additional four months of learning over two years when, that can be attributed to the curriculum alone. So that's an important thing to consider when we're looking to close gaps and accelerate learning post-COVID. So what does this mean in terms of what kids are experiencing in seventh and eighth grade? These are the seventh-grade modules, and the key anchor texts that they're reading is part of each of those modules. So you can see they focus on everything from The Lost Children of Sudan to epidemics and the plastic pollution. Again, a focus on both literature and nonfiction reading. As part of the performance tasks, kids create podcasts, and they help educate other people about the things that they're reading. And a closer look at eighth grade shows kind of a similar variety of reading. Kids are learning about food choices, and having to do kind of panel discussions about that, and also creating various works to showcase their understanding of history. So as I mentioned earlier, we had focus groups with students as well. And here are some of the things that students are saying. The connection to, between books and real-world problems really stood out to students. They enjoyed the text. Unlike Amplify, they enjoyed reading off the iPad. So there was a lot of focus on using technology for reading with the Amplify program. And although they liked the text and had some opportunity for real text, the prevalence of technology learning was a problem there. Kids themselves said the curriculum was stronger than last year. I don't really know what that means. But also noted lots of homework, and the homework being, so I push a little deeply, what does that mean? Well, we're having to do a lot of reading, like a chapter a night. That's a pretty good thing. So they're both focused on the content and also the rigor. And when I hear that from kids, I think that's a good indication of what the experience in classrooms is. This is a new way of thinking about reading that's kind of come into play recently that emphasizes, you know, when you're thinking about the two sides of the rope that I showed earlier, the word recognition and the language comprehension, that there is also a role that's, in terms of students' active engagement and their ability to self-regulate to bridge the gap between those things, that's important. And so when we think about older readers in particular, the focus on metacognition that's part of the EL program, where students are encouraged to kind of set goals, reflect on their own growth and the participation in community discussions, and how their learning applies to the world really stands out. So in thinking about our portrait of graduate that includes student agency, I think this is another reason why it's a good match for us. Okay, so now that we have a, we started with the Common Data Cycles in place, and now we have a Common Curriculum coming online, and those are two exciting initiatives. I want to talk a little bit about how we're garnering those resources. So I use this chart to explain kind of the data that we collect, both in the early elementary and the upper elementary side, where mostly, as we're transitioning to middle school, we're looking at student fluency. But we look at that assessment three times a year. And then we think about how those diagnostic tools make kids eligible for additional support. So although we can't extend kind of the goal-tracking process in STAR beyond grade six, we continue to collect data to monitor them. And Jeff Thayer has created some similar documents that enable us to replicate that process. So internally, we do that, and we have a graphing feature that allows us to look at trajectories for students in seven and eight as well. And we're looking to think about, you know, how we share this information and how we improve our systems for doing that. But we also use instructional rounds and student experiences in classrooms to inform how implementation is going. And one of the things you'll see when we look at our data is that that additional tutor support, I've highlighted Sherwood and Oak, because we added a second tutor there. So there's 30 hours of tutor support at Sherwood, and a reading specialist at Oak with a tutor there. And then in addition, the Title I hours that are funded, and the budget allocation to extend the ESAR-funded reading tutor hours that we had previously covered through a grant, have all added up to significant differences for kids. And I wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for your support before we look at the student data. So pictured here is Kristen Saig, who was willing to be snapped today at Oak. She stepped out from a student session to do that. But she's already formed really strong relationships, both with the reading team and with her colleagues at Oak, and most importantly, with the students that she sees. So what does this mean for kids? This is a winter, last year to winter this year comparison of the percentage of students that were designated for reading support, based on kind of STAR data. And you can see in the light green, you know, a decrease in the number of kids in kindergarten last year that were identified for support, and the number of kids in kindergarten this year that were identified for support. You can see that that's gone slightly up, if in first and second grade. Part of what we're looking at that is kind of who, what the cohort is. So that led to another way that we can view this chart, which I'll get to in a minute. But one of the things we looked at last year that sparked to the need for looking at additional middle school support was that these numbers were not as dark green as they are. So we're really celebrating that success and the hard work of the team at Sherwood and Oak. So another way that you can look at this chart is diagonally, and it might make your brain hurt a little bit to think of the class of 2037. But if you think about our current kindergarten students, oops, I'm going to go back this way. Last year are now our first-grade students this winter. So if you think about that and follow, okay, our current first-grade students, last year's first-grade students, current second-grade students. Are you following me?
Yep.
Okay. This is an easier way to kind of see that data. So in addition to looking at the number of first graders last year and the number of first graders this year, two different cohorts, we can compare cohorts, last year's kindergarteners to this year's first graders. And we can see that we're trending in the right direction, with less support needed across the board, pretty much. This one dot is kindergarten, and they are not assessed until the winter. So they don't have a dot previous to that. And I just wanted to explain that, that's not an error on the graph. That's just, we don't test kids when they come for school, right off the bat. If you add additional data points by looking back farther, you can kind of see the trend line stretched out over time. And, you know, aside from first grade, where we saw, that's the class of 2036, which is kind of hard to imagine, an increase and then a decrease. Here's that kindergarten dot again. And each of these cohorts represents a different grade level. So this is our current first graders, our current second graders, our current third graders. I've put a trend line here around kind of where our current fourth graders are, both as kind of like the middle cohort, and also because we're really working hard to shore up students' foundational skills before they transition to middle school. Because we know at the middle level how important it is for students to really be able to read, to learn, and to make that transition well, so that they can access additional content. One of the things that's kind of tricky about this data is managing the churn. So when I think about a first-grade group, not all of that first-grade group has remained. We've got some new kids that join each of those cohorts. So it's a little tricky to look at data over time, but important. And, you know, we do collect data three times a year. I've really focused on two data points, because most of the time I've done this presentation, it's been in the winter, and we've had two data points. But Joe's tasked me with thinking about what would it look like to extend it even further and to include our spring data, and we can certainly do that for future presentations. And this is kind of a percentile rank. Percentage rank is really a norm score that shows how our students are doing by grade level relative to other students in the nation. So if you had a score of 75, for example, you'd be out, you know, performing 75% of kids in that group. So if you had a 75, and you were a first grader, percentile rank, you'd be doing better than 75% of the first graders in the nation. And although that's been slower to anchor up, it's really important. We tend to look less at this data point, because in Massachusetts, our state benchmark is rigorous. And so our comparisons are more focused on predictive in terms of Massachusetts benchmarks is tested by the state exam. So the next graph that I'm going to show you kind of showcases that component. So when we change the benchmarks to look at, essentially, what this does is it assumes, based on the January scores, if kids took the MCAS in January, how well they would do. Now, knowing that they're not taking the MCAS in January by design, but by and large, the predictions have been within 10% of what our outcomes are. So having this result kind of in advance for teachers is a good thing, because we can help us see kids that we could kind of push into proficiency and close gaps. And also, when we look at it, we can see, if things hold true here, we should see a slight improvement in this year's MCAS scores. I don't want to be too, you know, knocking on wood, because, you know, kids are complex, and the test sometimes changes by incorporating new questions that we can't predict. But to the best of our knowledge, this is a pretty good indicator of how kids are doing relative to the higher standards we have in Massachusetts for proficiency. In addition to kind of building enthusiasm, we've been focusing on kind of student learning. I want to think about, the curriculum itself won't do the trick. And so teachers have been learning to be more kind of planful and thinking about how they acknowledge and support the needs of students foundationally while implementing a new curriculum. And so we've had ample time in our professional development to kind of really think about and orient to the curriculum. But I think we're in another phase of, so how do we adjust kind of instruction to make sure we meet the needs of all students? And that's hard to do when you're learning the new curriculum, and this is year one. So I just want to acknowledge our teachers are working really hard, and I'm sure that we'll have nuances in thinking about pacing and how we adjust units over the course of the year going forward. And that although, you know, in a sense, like, everybody has the curriculum, that doesn't mean everybody's totally set and skillful with the curriculum yet. We're going, we can anticipate we're going to need to continue to support teachers and students alike. And so I keep saying, progress over perfection, and we're going to be really great at this in three years. And so I want to make sure I'm messaging that to the community as well. So we know we've got the first part, the above-the-water with the high-quality instructional materials, and we're going to continue to focus on the twin needs of focusing on professional development and developing a data culture. And so, you know, pictured here is Kate Lewis, who is implementing in grade eight, and she was one of that adoption team. And she can, you know, think about and advocate for the materials and the difference that they've made on her kids, particularly kids who would be more reluctant to participate in previous years. But also, she'd be the first to tell you that she's, well, she's excited, she's still learning. And so, you know, my goal is that teachers will begin to feel like they're hitting their stride with this program as they become more familiar. And even our pilot teachers are now kind of anticipating teaching some units that they didn't see last year, because we had a different kind of pacing schedule. And I'm excited about getting farther into the curriculum, both for students and teachers. And so that brings us to a challenge of, you know, time being the one constant in everybody's lives, and balancing the urgency that you feel around kids who are in first grade only one time in their lives, and wanting to make a difference for them in that grade, and also understanding that change over time in a system takes time. And we also need to support the adults in the new learning. So I really just want to make sure that I'm acknowledging that everybody's working hard, and acknowledging that we have more hard work to do, and we can do hard things. We've proven that. But balancing the implementation isn't just about buying the stuff. It's also about managing the stuff and the people using it. So we're going to need to continue to invest in collaboration. And we're really fortunate that we have a strategic plan that kind of puts that front and center for us, and helps us think about how we're committing to educational excellence and what that looks like in classrooms. So we've also been, in addition to using the student data, kind of using informal data from instructional walkthroughs, and the feedback we get from teachers during professional development to think about how we, as leaders, can do better in supporting teachers. And again, I just want to end with, the goal is really to empower all of our students as they progress through the grades, to reach that vision of a graduate that is just prepared and ready and excited to access all the world has to offer, and ready to be a strong global citizen, informed citizen. That's my report. I'm here to hear your questions.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Effronin?
Sure. Yeah, all of our hands went up, so we're all very excited.
I feel like I should go grab my pen.
No, I think, Ms. Clowder, there's so much here to be very excited about. And I know it's still early, and this is a marathon and not a sprint. And yet, when I look at, when I was talking to Dr. Sawyer earlier, I called it your rainbow chart, not this one, but the one that kind of cascades with a few more data sets. And what I love about it is, not only does it show that, you know, the longer, I recognize there's churn, so not every kid is with us year over year. I do see that. But the longer the students are with us, the better we're doing, which is of course what we want in general, that we're seeing this overarching trajectory that is moving us in the right direction. And you've given us a few different data points that kind of consistently look at that, that we know that kids aren't linear, right? It's like so perfect here, and I recognize as a parent the difference between a winter and a fall, is like, well, summer happens, and we know kids slide back, and we know that's harder, younger grades, to kind of keep them up. So there's so much here, but the overarching trend that I think I took away from this is that this investment in money in dollars is relatively small, in time and intensity of the number of people who need to change practice and learn new things, and try new things in the classroom, and kind of be exposed. And I'm sure there are lots of pain points that are out there as well, because change is tricky. But I think we're doing really well by our kids. And that's sort of what I take away from this. You know, and I know we're going to talk about the budget here, P, soon, as well, but I am just like, wow, we're moving in the right direction here. And really, you know, nearly every grade level, we're seeing it move again in this trend that is the right trend. And so I have no doubt there will be moments of hiccups, and that And so I have no doubt there will be moments of hiccups and that there's lots that goes into that. Um, and the picking of a curriculum was sort of like the big thing that needed to get decided. And I'm glad we've also now made the big decision about seven and eight. And I'm very happy you did the rigor to decide what that program should be. And I'm very happy you landed where you landed and that that worked out because it does feel like it allows for a lot of consistency. And we talk a lot about kids transitioning from five, six to seven and eight. And how do we make that just as sort of easy for them and that there's a lot, a lot of consistency here? So um just a lot of a lot of kudos is really all I all I have to to offer here and a.
I have to share that with the.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and my hope frankly, that there's op- lots of opportunities for people to like step back and see the big picture too. So like we're looking, we kind of almost only look at the big picture. And I don't look at, we don't look at individual student reports and what happened here and why is this number here or what about question four? Um, and so I hope there's an opportunity for staff to kind of see this because while I'm sure there there may be some bemoaning at different moments in time about about either the level or the pace, I think this is what our job is, right? Uh, and so it's it's also just very exciting. So um hoping that well, on whatever metric you use and the percentile rank over time. So this is the, you know, kids doing declining number of kids who need help and the rising number of kids who are in proficiency. Those are just um some really wonderful things that tells me that our our objectives here, right, are like really focused, data-driven work, right? Supported by lots of professional development and the right tools, we're very much on the right path. So um I I hope that everyone can, everyone else can feel that, those who may be in classrooms and have very different day-to-day challenges as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I you said very much what I was going to say. Obviously, we're going in the right direction, which is great. Um, when I was looking at the data, I was especially looking at our fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth because if we go back in time and COVID happened and way to go home, those were our kindergarten, third grade where they were like in the midst of learning how to read and they now had to figure out how to do that at home. So the fact that they are on the trajectory that they are is amazing. Um, and also looking at this, I do, I I really appreciate the amount of work that has gone into this from you, from the teachers, from the staff, this is a lot. And I I'll say that from, you know, I have a second and a fifth grader who have now got are going through EL. Um, and the quality of work that's coming home and just the engagement that they have is is unlike in past years. And I I'm assuming it's the curriculum, but they just, they have like something about them that it's just, it's triggering something. Um, and I shared this with um Dr. Sawyer earlier. So um one of mine is in second grade and one of the units was fossils. And um when, right before they did fossils, she came home, I was like, I don't want to learn about bones. Um, but she quickly figured out through for her classroom and what they were having them do, like this is actually not so bad. And actually, one of your slides that we have like later in the, you can see a picture of, they asked for us to send in paper towel rolls and toilet paper rolls. And they made a dig that the kids could like pretend that they were paleontologists and whatever. Um, but in Abby's classroom, she um, her teachers were actually as part of teaching them and engaging them, they were telling her about or her class about Apex the dinosaur. Um, and she was like, Mom, Apex lives in the na- the Museum of Natural History. So our kids, we took them to New York City over February vacation. She's like, Apex lives at the Natural Museum. So I was like, okay, so we took we took them and it was her mission to find Apex. We found Apex, the Stygosaurus. She took her picture, she was very proud, then we quickly moved on because we wanted lunch. But um but she, there was this curriculum stuck with her and the the extra that her teachers had done to research more and like to really make it engaging for all levels of learners. It for me, that pays, like that, that's a a big thing. And I shared that with her teachers today that that we went to go find Apex. But um it's just like, it for me, this is incredible and I'm gr- I'm glad that we have this at the elementary level and to see that transition up to seventh and eighth, I'll I will have an eighth grader next year. So seeing that will will be interesting, but um there's a lot to be proud of. And I I I hope, and I also mentioned this to to Dr. Sawyer, the next time you come, uh, because there or, you know, at the end of this school year or the beginning of next year, there's so much great work that the teachers are doing and creating really interesting curriculum for the students, showcase that. I I'd love to see the different ideas and I know that this is just going to build and just get better and better. Um, but I would love like the paleontology thing, that was just, that was great. If we can have like exam, like more, like bring, bring people with that with you so that they can just show show off. And I know they're not going to show off, but show off because this is really great stuff.
Oh, well, that's that's the the best thing ever, you hear that? That's why I do what I do, is to see what the impact on students is. So thank you for that trip to New York City. I hope you had a good lunch. But for me, the stickiness of the curriculum, because kids are engaged in creating it, uh, is important. And and so that's a perfect example of that. I'd love to come back and sho- showcase some student work.
Miss, appreciate it.
Um, thank you so much for the report. Uh, it's it's so helpful to see this work in action. Um, I really appreciate you walking us through the process that you used to come through up with what you were going to use for seventh and eighth grade. I think it's really helpful for not only for us, but for the community to see, you know, the 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 real vetting that went into that and um the real careful selection and thoughtfulness. So thank you for um showcasing that. I also just wanted to turn your attention to the slide, I think maybe bef- one before this one or two, it's the, yes. And I just wanted to ask a little bit about the dramatic um change in fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth from those percentages. And just maybe if you could give us some context as to why you think those numbers, um, you know, really, I mean, sixteen percent, fourteen percent, that's a big change in a short amount of time. So if you had any um explanation or you could shed some light on kind of what why you think those numbers changed so much.
I think there are two reasons. I I have to give credit to both the reading team who are working on shoring up students foundational skills. And often, once kids get it, they can make progress faster in terms of getting those skills. Um, but our reading specialists have been really focused on who are the kids in the middle level who have not mastered the foundational skills that they need to be successful, which means that the fluency and comprehension work has been taken by team teachers and Lisa Daley. Uh, and so they've developed by looking at the data and pockets of need, um, what fluency interventions really work and the support of Kristen Osborne, who's our literacy co- um consultant, kind of supporting Kristen, uh, supporting Lisa in that to say, okay, here's a fluency routine that everybody during academic focus time needs to do. And last year, we we didn't have as targeted a schedule during the day in both middle schools in order to make the most of that time in training. I think the other trend that you see is as more kids master foundational skills, then they're able to work on fluency. And there with more kids working on fluency, there's more room for kids who are really in need of foundational skills. And so there's been a migration of kids who had really needy um support in terms of the foundation to more fluency and comprehension. Um, and so that's freed the reading specialist caseload to take more needy needy kids. Whereas before, they were, they were deluged with a lot of bottled up demand, not because anybody was trying to do a disservice to students, but because we had a lot more students in need than we had resources to address them. But I think that the consistency, when I talk about the reading team, they are really a team. And they come together and problem solve really well. You know, we're seeing this piece here, or you know, we're noticing that first grade has a mighty threshold between the fall and the winter. Um, that that cut score really goes up really high. So let's take a look at what's happening with first grade. You know, what are some passages that we could use to prepare kids for that? Um, and I, the training that uh Lisa and Kristen have given team teachers has grown their expertise because if you're teaching middle school, you're you're not typically teaching foundational reading. And so they've they've had to adopt some materials from grades four and five for use in grade six. But they've also kind of learned how to support kids in in building their fluency. And and I I think it's exciting to see that difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fritz.
I, yeah, for me, I think literacy is one of our most important areas for educational services, in reading and comprehension and writing for students because it's across all subject areas. And yeah, I think it's more of a nationwide, it's not just a shoes where you issue. We're seeing literacy rates down everywhere. But I think our district, when we were noticing the gaps, uh, quickly jumped on it. And with your skill, getting on that, getting the right programs with our staff because change is difficult, no matter what industry you're in, and it's a lot of work, but it's necessary. And I think these are the positive results for the investment that we've put in. So thank you for all your work because I think you spearheaded getting this and our students. This is showing positive results, which is something that we really want to see for any investment that we put in. And I also want to look at, you know, that strategic investment to meet our objectives. You helped get that grant for two hundred and fifty thousand. This is, we put money in, but there's also a lot of other money that's not out of our local appropriated budget that is going. And I see it as an area that as a school committee for budgeting that we're going to have to keep looking at as we move forward. And what is that appropriate level? And I know you're having the budget piece next, but my question, it might be in your next presentation, is, you know, what's next around that budget as we're moving and looking at FY twenty-six? Are there other areas that we maybe need to add for literacy that we don't have in the budget now? So as we move forward, that's one thing I would ask you to come to us with.
Yeah, um, certainly, I think I'll I'll get at some of the cost drivers for the budget process. But I think the short term is kind of adjusting to a budget that has room for consumables that are, you know, because every kid has a consistent curriculum and a and a workbook, we're going to need to buy those, some of those things every year. Um, although the the bulk of our expense has been addressed by the grant and the town ARPA funds that came our way, um, we are going to need, you know, some some cushion for that. I think the other piece is um really looking at, we've built a system to respond to student need um as kids progress through the grades through K eight, based on using the star screener. It stops at at K eight, but student need doesn't stop there. And so what does it look like to support kids who, as they enter um high school with some some reading support needs? And I think part of that uh is is driven by the fact that we have a nu- a number of kids who are in kind of the highest level of reading support, the tier three with the reading specialists, are kids that weren't with us at elementary school. So we're getting kids late to the game and having to get them to proficiency before they transition to the high school. Um, and then there's lots of questions now like what, where does this data go when it gets to the high school? Um, and a high school, I think, is, you know, really thinking about how to support ki- kids' needs, but it's a different animal. As kids, you know, there isn't a block in the schedule, the schedule is really individualized. So findings, uh, uh, it will take a new model and and more people around the table to do that. But those are the questions that we're wrestling with right now. And I appreciate you acknowledging the grant writing. Um, I was so so delighted that that investment of my time in that yielded such dividends for us. But I also just need to say that this has been something that's been a priority for all the district leaders, um, from building principals to curriculum coaches to down to the classroom teachers. So um it's not just my good work that that's helped me this happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the report. This is a good news story, uh, no doubt about it. I think not only are we investing in the bright areas, but our educators are doing an exceptional job uh executing uh this initiative. Uh, there's a a learning curve that that's come that we've talked about in in many meetings. Um, and I do appreciate this report is very deep with data and I love that. I was actually fixated on page five of nine in your report. I opted for the popsicle headache route diagonally before I got to the bottom. But I, what I I saw like right away is looking at last year, in particular, fourth grade, the designated for reading support, it was like thirty-five percent, and it dropped to twenty-two percent in the winter. And you look at those fourth graders that went to fifth grade and now we're we're down to eight percent in in each, even though that's it's flat here. I mean, the dramatic drop in the amount of support needed was just significant. It looks looks that way as you look across the the later grades, which is great to see. Um, so yeah, I appreciate all the work that you're doing with the team and and getting this uh this uh initiative out there. It takes time, it takes investing in the right things. And uh as Ms. Heffernan said, it's a marathon, not a sprint, but we're seeing some really good results. Uh, so thank you and thanks to all our educators for driving this. Uh, Dr. Sawyer, for your comments.
Thank you. I want to echo uh what all the members have said. I thank the school committee for supporting the investments over the last few years that that have been made. First off, I'm really pleased, uh, I've commented before that um seeing the level of engagement that students have with these texts and the way that teachers are orchestrating those conversations has been really impressive. Uh, and I'm really excited about seventh and eighth grade, uh, moving forward with this program. Um, having worked with that age group for a couple of years as the principal at Oak earlier in my career, um, I I recognize how key it is to engage students that age with really, you know, important topics that are connected to the larger world. They 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 are ready to have those conversations. And you know, if they feel like they're not being um elevated, uh, you know, in a way that they're intellectually ready for, uh, you know, that that's not a, that's not a place we want to be. If they are that way, you could have really rich conversations and really accelerate their learning and really prepare them for a really strong entry into the high school years. Um, so I think it's going to be an excellent program uh for them. Uh, but just uh again, celebrating the progress that that we've, uh, students have made. We're proud of our educators, our paraeducators, our students, um, certainly the families for supporting them with the work at home and the homework. And it's, uh, you know, we're we're really pleased to see this data. And I I am confident that we are starting on a path that's going to really pay tremendous uh payoff tremendously in terms of student learning and higher levels of literacy. And uh it's a lot of hard work, I appreciate all that hard work. But uh I think this is a good example uh early on that this is paying off. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. I will continue on to the next item on our agenda, which is under finance and operations. It's the FY twenty-six curriculum instruction and assessment budget report, uh, which includes information on key areas of budget responsibility, key investments, uh, use of grant funds and optimization of additional resources. It outlines proposals for the budget in the FY twenty-twenty-six uh budget. And Ms. Clado will present that to us today. Back to you.
Thank you. Um, so I I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the budget piece in conjunction with literacy because I think the mark of a strong district is where it puts its dollars. And our our strategic goals are really ambitious, as we've alluded to. Uh, and also our our teachers and paraeducators are extraordinarily hardworking. So um I want to talk a little bit about our needs that are kind of predictable and ongoing and then also address kind of Sandy, what you alluded to in terms of kind of emerging needs and and thoughts about the future. Um, so without uh any further delay, the key areas of budget responsibility within the curriculum instruction and assessment budget are providing curriculum materials, which we've talked extensively about, um, ensuring that instructional leadership and their support of strong teaching practices in the classroom. So supporting both principals and their work and and classroom teachers and theirs. Uh, coordinating the state and local assessment, um, we've heard me do numerous MCAS reports at this point, um, and facilitating PD for the district, uh, which happens on early release days, but also happens as part of job embedded PD during department meetings or grade level meetings. Um, and I can assure you that literacy has come up in all of those forums over the course of the years as we've tried to gear up for this. Um, I want to acknowledge the people behind the curriculum instruction and assessment efforts. Uh, so we, I now kind of supervise twenty-six people, um, including seven elementary instructional coach, curriculum coordinators, uh, the reading team, K eight, uh, middle level curriculum coordinators, the nine twelve department coordinators and district department uh directors. And um I think, you know, there's also Liz, who helps coordinate all of the things for all of those people together with me. So although she's not on this chart, she's very much a a member of the team and and this is a chance to shout out to all her good work as well. Um, as we talked about, you know, our our numbers are trending in a really good direction achievement-wise. Um, and that's made possible by the additional resources that we were able to provide, um, particularly in the form of um reading tutor hours and also a reading specialist position, but also the ELE leadership position. Um, that's really helped us to think about that strategic question that Sandy's asked and how do we support kids um better? Um, and you know, this looks at the different levels of support by grades over time. And again, that reading story uh shows that the investments that we've made are are paying dividends for students. Um, again, you you saw this in your previous report. Um, we continue to see that the supports we put in place are making a difference in terms of out academic outcomes. So the total percentage of kids who are receiving different types of reading support um over time says that we're able to shift shift that support lower. Um, at the same time, it's never going to be zero. We're always going to have students that come to us needing some support. And so um we're still trying to figure out what is the typical expectation about what support looks like by grade. Um, but we're hoping to continue to lower those numbers. Um, and as we think about allocating our resources, I think I'm always really grateful when I have to make hard decisions that we have a strategic plan that kind of outlines our priorities. Um, and so we've invested from a professional learning standpoint in terms of universal design for learning, um, belonging, diversity, inclusion and equity, equity, and most recently literacy. Um, having a strong foundation in these three things kind of poised us to be able to grow in the next row. So although as a district, we have some common areas of focus. And this year, you've heard a lot about positive behavioral um interventions and supports. That's another example of a district professional development focus. Um, there's also department level focuses. So for example, the English language education department might be focusing on something that's completely different from world language and all of them fall under. and all of them fall under the umbrella of professional development. So I want to make sure that I'm saying that because I think sometimes we think PD, we're only thinking about the early release days. And from a parent perspective, that makes sense. But there are also faculty meeting and department times that require additional investment and support. So we just completed the training in the science of reading last year, and we're integrating the new curriculum in K six this year and are anticipating that that program will extend to K eight next year. Well, this certainly introduces kind of pacing challenges. It's exciting to see kind of how engaging the curriculum is for students and to hear from teachers that it's getting easier over time as things are getting more familiar. So our implementation team last year is having a different experience this year. And I'm very hopeful that once people have had a year under their belt, they'll be feeling similarly positive next year. But again, as we've mentioned in our previous report, they'll need ongoing support. And so, you know, Lisa Daley, Hallie Barak at Oak, and the reading specialists and will still be involved in thinking about how we support students and teachers alike as they have questions about student achievement. Provisioning all students and educators in K to eight will also require an annual investment of about one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. So that's important to kind of keep in mind. And I'm still getting quotes about grade seven and eight. But for right now, we're looking at purchasing student workbooks and classroom sets of trade books, those permanent features that we did for K six. And making sure that, you know, in negotiating with the company, that we're not buying things that we don't want, like PD, because we've learned we can provide really good PD in-house, but making sure that we're getting the materials that we do want. And right now, that's coming in the range of about one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So when you put those numbers together, you might be thinking, well, wait a minute, how are we gonna do this? We've been able to allocate some of this year's curriculum budget in order to do some of that purchasing. And that's really planful so that teachers in seven and eight can orient the materials before next year starts. That always makes everybody feel better if they can get their hands on stuff. And also helps to mitigate the lump of that number. Also, we're thinking about, from a strategic perspective, maintaining data systems. And so one of the things that we purchased with Esser Money was the software that allows us to run the Star Assessment Platform. That's going to expire this June, and so we've built into the budget kind of how we might cover that. That's about ninety thousand dollars a year. So depending on whether we look at multi-year contracts or single-year contracts, I think that with this particular contract, there's no advantage to having a multi-year. So we might get more leverage thinking about one year at a time. But that's another, another piece of managing the budget that's always on my mind is the digital subscriptions that renew. Because increasingly, we have a combination of hard copy materials and also digital tools. And I'm sure Katie Ann will talk about his role in that when he presents his budget. And finally, kind of the other work that I do that's really kind of at the heart of why I come to work is working together with district leaders and teachers as we visit classrooms. And so we can predict some of the focus of professional development, but we also really inform what we're focused on based on what we see in classrooms because we want to provide teachers with support that they can really use. And so as we visit classrooms, these are floral, and floral's on my mind, shout out to floral because we were there on Tuesday. It was really exciting to see how some of the things that felt really unfamiliar last year, the implementation of the foundational reading piece that you see the little boy on the left with his letter tiles, is kind of second nature now. The kids understand kind of how to take out their tiles to practice their words as they put their tiles away. Everybody has a system for organizing those tiles, and it seems like it's part of their practice. So I anticipate that as we go further with the EL language arts curriculum, that the same thing will happen in terms of routines for language comprehension. If you think about my budget as a total, it's like a pie divided into roughly nine slices or spending categories. So educational supplies and instructional equipment are still the biggest drivers of the budget. In fact, like if I think about those two things together, for some reason, my animation isn't working. Oh, there we go. Those two categories alone take up most of my budget. And with that, we're thinking about, you know, multiple things in that one budget category, including ST math, Desmos for the middle level, which is part of their curriculum, Alex, which is part of the curriculum for high school, as well as the illustrative math materials. Sora, which is a library prescription that enables kids to be able to listen to books at home on their iPads. Digital subscriptions that enable flexible support for students that need additional practice in, like for newcomer curriculum, for English learners. And as we work to honor the kind of the diversity in our schools, teachers need updated resources that reflect those changing standards too. So you know, you've heard from the request for, you know, eighty thousand dollars in the budget for additional history and social studies curriculum materials are also included in kind of what I'm anticipating as future costs. But lump sum, what's budgeted for next year is seven hundred and fourteen, three hundred, which just looks like a big number. And that bulk of that is textbooks, instructional equipment, and educational supplies. So this takes that pie and shows what each pie kind of summed up to over the years. So this is kind of what that, the curriculum pie looked like in FY twenty, FY twenty-one, to FY twenty-two. You can see here, this is the pre-override years. And then you can see that that increase has really benefited us. But I think it also tells kind of the story of the variability from one year to the next in thinking about how to provision. This year includes kind of the costs we receive through the grant and also the town. So if, one of the things I'm really grateful to is kind of showing that while the appropriated budget has been relatively, you know, stable, we've also benefited from additional resources that come from outside sources. And so Chris did some fantastic work kind of breaking that down. And this is probably a better story in terms of looking at the budget. So when you think about those stacks that I showed on the previous rainbow slide, the blue is each of those columns that's the appropriated budget. You can see the red is the funding that we get from Title II, which is an entitlement grant. And that's been relatively stable thus far. So that has been used to pretty much cover the cost of the mentoring program that we have. It used to fund professional development as well, but our mentoring costs have expanded. And so we eat into the rest of the pie for professional development by and large. You can see after FY twenty-two, thank you again to the town of Shrewsbury for that override, that we get back to having a healthier budget. And this is all non-personnel costs. I should have started off by saying that. So big picture wise, you can see we were in a really bad place prior to the override, and our expenditures had to reduce in ways that were just not reasonable for a district of our size. We get back to reasonable. And here you can see in purple, Esser helped supplement the budget. And then the instructional materials grant helped to provision us for purchasing the literacy curriculum. And half of our funds for that came from the high quality materials grant through DESI. And then the remainder of that came from the town ARPA funds, which is the purple. So we purchased some in between two budget years. And then you can kind of see what's budgeted for next year as well. I'm looking for the green. The green is Title IV, which is just a smaller entitlement grant. We plan to use our Title IV money to kind of support the CTE programming at the high school. So in terms of thinking about how we're strategic with our budget, we're really, I'm really grateful that we've had, you know, we've benefited from having additional funds come our way on top of what was appropriated. But it also shows kind of the impact of that variability. And we're now trying to kind of boost the appropriated budget so we can have more. And I think you'll hear more in the report from DMG signaling that we have an overreliance on non-local funds and that it's really important that we work to be sustainable. Because, well, you know, we're really fortunate to have those things. Everything that we, every dollar we get outside of the blue takes some level of manpower to either manage, even if it's an entitlement grant, we're accounting for the funds and reporting to the state about them. Or a competitive grant, again, they're going to give you, you know, half a million dollars. They're gonna want to have you report out on how things are going. And you have to write the grant in the first place to be successful. So often, we write grants for civics education, for example, and invest time in that, and we don't get them. And I don't come to school committee and say the grants we don't get. But I think this is my opportunity to say that we really try to take advantage of writing every grant that's an opportunity for us because I recognize that that makes a powerful difference in terms of the bottom line. This slide shows kind of the scope of our federal entitlement grants. We get a healthy sum from that. And again, they have different areas of focus. So Title I really is for supporting schools with high numbers of children from low-income families. And we currently use that at Beal and Coolidge to supplement literacy tutor hours. Title II A, as I mentioned before, the focus is really supporting adult professional development. And that is, supports our three-year mentoring program for new staff. Again, we retain the staff that we hire by and large really well. And I think part of that is because we have a really thoughtful mentoring program. So when I say that it takes the whole Title II budget to manage that, that's not a bad thing. That's a really good investment. It just means that there's less dollars to go somewhere else. Title III is earmarked to help English learners, and Christina Manos manages that grant. Some of it includes supporting summer slides so that we, you know, have support for kids who need it over the summer. But that's also funds PD for her department and other instructional materials. And then Title IV is designed to support safe and healthy schools and STEM education. And so as I mentioned, we're using that to support the CTE program materials. Not the entire program by any means, but to help out with some of the material costs. One of the challenges is that not, kind of not captured is some of the things that we've gotten by virtue of applying to be part of DESI cohorts. So as we have less dollars in Title II to cover PD, had to be creative about joining DESI cohorts to kind of have access to ongoing professional development. And so we were really successful in being part of the mass-tiered literacy academy, which brought us some hours from Kristen Osborne. And I'm very grateful that you supplemented those hours by giving her some additional time as a consultant with us. That mass-tiered literacy academy, we're in year three, so that ends. And similarly, we've been part of a cohort with the New Teacher Project, TNTP, that's helped kind of support some of our work with instructional rounds and helping leaders to understand and recognize and how to support rigor in the classroom. That's also coming to an end at the end of this year. So I'm mindful that that's going to be kind of an area of uncertainty for us in terms of leveraging resources to continue that work. We'll have to rely on district leaders having, maintaining systems that we've built together with those consultants. From a TNTP perspective, Kristen Osborne remains in the budget. And again, I'm really grateful for that because we'll need her support, knowing that the literacy work will continue. And then I just want to acknowledge the uncertainty about not knowing what's happening with federal grants. And having seen what a big proportion of that, I hope that we can rely on it. We have been consistently able to get very stable funds there. But it seems like we're in a new normal, and I just want to acknowledge that that could play a big impact on our budget overall. And I know you have an additional detailed report about the budget. And it's been a long night. I feel like I've hogged a lot of airtime, ready for questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Colleagues, questions? Ms. Fritz?
Thank you for mentioning, you know, the dependency on dollars above the appropriated budget. Because when we talk about budget, a lot of it, you know, is focused on that, what we have from the town in appropriated budget dollars. But we spend a significant amount above that out of necessity. And we've been fortunate to have people like yourself and a lot of others throughout the district who are writing these grants and looking for every single penny to supplement what we need to do. So I think that's a big piece of it. I'll be interested to see when the DMG report comes out and that component of it and looking at that as we should be looking for sustainability as we move forward and not having that total dependency. And being a minimum A district, I don't see that changing anytime soon based on the state model and the wealth of the community. So looking at more sustainable budget dollars is something we need to do as a school committee as we go forward. So thank you for bringing that up. And, you know, the challenges going forward are a little scary because we do have significant funding from that. And those are needs that we still have to fill in some manner. So thank you for highlighting that. It's something we need to think about as we go forward.
Further questions, comments? Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I want to thank you again, Ms. Heffernan, for the report. I think, I think it's important for us to kind of put this slide in perspective with the outcome slides from before. And so we do them with two separate, also, can I just say, is it funny? I never realized your acronym was CIA was your team.
I kind of take some secret delight.
I know. I was like, that is too fun. But when I think about the work here, right, what does it say that your, our spending has gone up? And some might, some might object to that. And our student achievement has also gone up, right? And that, and that baked within your budget is both the curriculum that's necessary and also the professional development that's necessary to, what I would say, move the needle for, you know, across a district. And so I think I look at the slide, at one point you said, I'm sorry to say the number's big. You said just a few minutes ago, and I'm like, you know, those numbers in the other part of this chart were way too low, right? For a district of our size. So, you know, what I still don't like in this, in my role, is the volatility, even as things are better, right? And so it's better post-override, but that is still, you know, we are in a world that changes all of the time. We want our kids to understand the complexity of the world that changes. Our curriculum has to change, our pressure, but we have hundreds of staff who need and deserve good support to stay in a challenging career. And so whether it's on PBIS, on, you know, managing complex behaviors, or whether it's a new science curriculum, or a math curriculum, or a civics curriculum. And so I think there's actually a story here that is much more about, I don't think we've been probably contributing enough in this space. And I, while I am appreciative of those orange and lavender boxes that are outside support, I think there's an, there's an argument to be made that, you know, we should be higher to those numbers. The numbers got too small, of sort of an FY twenty-four, kind of as something closer to like what should be level. Because I am sure there are things that you're not doing. And so if we went back, I think a question that Ms. Fritz asked, and maybe I want to just like pull it back up again. We spend a lot of time talking about literacy. We spend a fair bit of amount of time talking about sort of like, you know, career exploration and other ways, project lead the way. I'm just wondering, what else is on the horizon for us? We spent two, a cycle ago or two cycles ago, thinking about the ninth grade, social sciences, world.
World civilization.
Thank you. I was like, it's not, we have world civilization, that that needed an upgrade. Like what else should we be thinking about as some bigger blocks of expenses that do become hard for us to fund? And I said to Dr. Sawyer earlier, given the way our budgets are structured, so much of what we have, because we, when we hit a pinch, we would never want to think about touching staff because staff are integral to what we do, and that's how we function. We have a whole bunch of mandates and requirements. We spent a lot of money to move kids around towns and drone transportation. And unfortunately, your department has tended to be one of the ones that we can say, well, we'll wait another year on that. And we'll wait, you know, because, because it does have both that variability to it. And we'll say, well, we'll do that curriculum next year, right? And I, I don't like that. It's not the place I want to be. But I wanted to acknowledge a reality that because of the pressures and other parts of the budget that don't allow us to do that. So I guess I'd love you to project a couple of years forward. What are some of the other things that are maybe on the horizon for you and the district leaders? And whether at the, you know, high school level, middle school level, like what else are we thinking about? Because we spend a lot of time thinking literacy, 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 and we want those kids to learn how to read so they can learn all the other things they're supposed to be learning.
So I think, you know, you captured it well when you said that, you know, we're kind of a make-it-work department. And we make work with what we've got, I think, by necessity. Because everything, you know, in all departments is important. And I think there's some things that can't wait. You know, it's been some time since we launched a process for elementary math. And we've got more recent curriculum at the middle level for math that aligns nicely with the high school. But we really need to take a look at that because our curriculum materials are outdated. Again, our internal team has adjusted some of those program materials, both based on using the data from the MCAS well, and also because, you know, we- Um and in and also because um, you know, we've we've been able to kind of look at our alignment versus the kind of the curriculum which was written more with a national lens in mind and and tailor it to Massachusetts standards. But um I was uh principal relatively early in my career when we looked at math in focus. And I, um that was a long time ago. So I I think, you know, curriculum renewal cycles are are always top of mind for me. Um we have some requests from DLT that number, you know, a lot of things under the CIA uh account budget. You know, like US history renewing, the AP psychology books, which are more than a decade old. Um and the CTE aspect of the budget, which calls for some, you know, updating of computers and machines, part of which would be kind of cadian, but the um the curriculum aspects of that would fall under me. Um but I, you know, there's there's a whole list of DLT requests that when we are fortunate to have um savings at the end of the year because our hiring has come in well or we've had other um support from the town or or other outside donors, um we've put that to investing in longer term strategic things like making sure our libraries have equitable collections across schools because they rely on PTO funding to kind of support those collections. And so that means that there's still some unevenness there. Um and then that's that's not getting to kind of the the newer innovative um pieces. So, you know, those that in the short term, tho- those are some things that are top of mind for me. Um because I am always thinking about, okay, so i- i- if we sustain this focus on literacy, what are the other content areas we need to look at? And we've deferred for, we were poised to look at elementary social studies. And in a way, it's a gift that we press pause on that because EL integrates social studies into some units. And so now we have an opportunity to kind of rethink that. But um, you know, we put that in a box and haven't looked at it since then. And that was, you know, twenty twenty.
Okay. That that I guess just for my colleagues as we think sort of going forward and we try to think about what are the scenarios that we want in terms of modeling out. Certainly one of my hopes and wishes, and they don't all get fulfilled certainly, is that we see some more stability in this budget line item and sort of a regularized sort of growth. And we we will never be able to do all of the things and your wish list will always be things that are unmet. Um but it also feels important that we've we've invested a lot of time and particularly resources when we talk about dollars into literacy. And I think that was absolutely the right choice. But I recognize that it has probably boxed out some other things that are um maybe not of equal importance, given how foundational um literacy is, but uh but don't want to be caught behind the curve on too many other things that we're now trying to, you know, that we may be scrambling for, you know, a year or two from now. So thank you for for sharing. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? I'd like to thank you for the report. I actually appreciate that we've used the same structure that we had last year, just that kind of that executive summary in the first couple pages. Uh because I think, you know, to educate the public, to educate town leadership that's not in the day to day, I think it's really important to kind of break things down this way so they understand kind of where the money is going. Um, you know, whether it's, you know, just defining what the key areas of responsibility are, key investments, and then a full breakdown of those, you know, local and non-local uh grant dollars as well as the efficiencies that you've looked at. Um and as been mentioned a few times among the comments, I go back to that January twenty-sixth, twenty-second meeting that we had, the presentation from GMG, a third party that's provided an assessment on, you know, the finances uh for school department. Uh and they did call out the risk of reliance on non non-local funds. We know that, uh these dollars that are not part of the town's appropriated budget uh for the school department. And uh, you know, certainly the uncertainty of federal grants is is real, like, you know, it's we're living in a different world right now. And I mean, it could all change tomorrow for all we know. Um so that's real. When I look at the report, that reliance on non-local funds, I I think, if I'm reading this right, is five hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars, right? So that's a significant chunk of money. Uh it's not guaranteed. There's significant work, as you mentioned, that goes into just applying for these grants and then to manage them once we have them. And we've been very fortunate uh to receive these dollars. Uh so just definitely something to call out and and you could see that alignment with those risks that DMG called out. So uh but thank you for the the effort in the report and the thoughtful presentation on your CIA budget. Thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer, further comments?
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Clutter for her skillful leadership and management of the budgetary part of her role. Chris Girardi for his assistance there as well, of course. And uh their assistants, Liz Tedesco and Kim Fitzpatrick, uh it really does make a difference. And there's a lot of a lot of work that goes into the pieces that that um just to manage this all throughout the course of the year, as you might imagine, with a pretty small team. Uh, you know, it is a critical part of our our investment as a community in uh public education. Um I too would like to see more stability in terms of what we can predict year to year through what we we know would be coming from a local budget under typical circumstances. Um that risk of non-local funds and being available and what's, you know, swirling at the federal level is something we have to pay attention to, which is why, you know, in the budget presentation I made two weeks ago, um keeping a healthy balance in the circuit breaker reserve uh is key um as we have some unpredictability there in case there is something that is unexpected um in terms of some of that funding, uh those funding sources. But um I think that the, you know, the investments that we uh make ultimately are are smart ones. And uh, you know, again, we see them paying off in terms of results. So I want to thank Ms. Clutter and uh and look forward to um presenting this information as we go through the process with the Finance Committee and ultimately a town meeting. So uh again, thank you for the report.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh next item on our agenda is also under Finance and Operations. It's a vote on the preschool tuition recommendation uh that was made at our February twelfth School Committee meeting by Director of Preschool Programs, Ms. Bridget Nichols, who proposed shifting the current half-day preschool programming located at Beal School to a full-day preschool model and increasing existing preschool tuition rates by three percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh the report is enclosed. Uh Dr. Sawyer recommends that the school committee approve the three percent increase to rates and the new full-day tuition rate as proposed by Ms. Nichols. Um any further comments, Dr. Sawyer, on that?
Um I have not received, nor has Ms. Nichols received any feedback regarding, and she publicized it to all the preschool parents in a couple of different ways um since that presentation was made. Uh and uh, you know, my my recommendation remains uh as stated in the materials and uh would like to have these approved so we can move forward with letting families know what the rates will be uh for the coming year.
Okay. I haven't seen any emails or feedback from the public, colleagues. Any further comments on this before we take a vote?
Really quick, Ms. Ms. Muntzky, I think I think as a um as a matter of sort of policy, we try to hold those those rates to basically cover the cost to run the program. And those are pretty modest increases. It's been a number of years since we have we have raised them. And certainly folks, we spent a long time on this at our our last meeting. Um but I think um Ms. Nichols presents a compelling reason why we've hit that point where now is the time. And so um appreciate that we have not waited so long that the increase has to be substantial, uh but it's still quite quite modest. So I'm I appreciate the efforts that she went through to make sure we, you know, along with you, Dr. Sawyer, and I'm sure Mr. Girardi was involved as well, sort of stay competitive, both within the market. In fact, we had a really high-quality program that we think is under market still. So um certainly I'd be I'd be willing to make make a motion to to approve those if you would like at this point, Ms. Muntzky.
Yeah. So, yeah, if I could have a motion that the committee vote to approve the tuition rates for preschool programs as presented.
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is under New Business. It's the school district calendar for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Uh Dr. Sawyer is going to summarize his recommendations uh for the for next year's school calendar uh and answer any questions the committee uh has. A draft calendar uh will be posted for public comment in advance of requested vote at the committee's meeting on March twelfth. Uh and then the draft calendar is enclosed in our packets. Um with that, I'll hand it to Dr. Sawyer to walk us through.
Thank you. Um so in terms of the the draft that's in your materials, uh it uh follows the same approach that we've used for a number of years now since the last calendar committee was convened, um which focuses on uh following that the typical vacation periods, uh the state holidays were were required by law to recognize uh and to ultimately end the school year, uh sort of in mid-June, uh not risking going very late into the uh s- uh warmer uh time period there in June. Uh but also, uh which is accomplished by the longstanding tradition of starting before Labor Day um in Shrewsbury, uh as well as uh managing through without uh other additional days throughout the calendar. Um in terms of the differences from the current year calendar to uh the proposed one for next year, uh something we've changed back and forth different times over the years. Uh the proposal is for uh the first day for students to be the Wednesday prior to Labor Day uh for grades one through twelve. Uh and then that will be the visiting day for families for preschool and kindergarten who would have their first day of school the next day. Uh we've been having those day that first day on Tuesday um and then having a professional development day on the Friday uh prior to Labor Day based on feedback from the uh leadership team um relative to a couple of things. First off, uh some sense that for a number of students uh starting that week of having three days and then having four full days off before resuming on the Tuesday after Labor Day um has been a bit of a tricky piece where kids, maybe things aren't, that they're trying to get in place that first week aren't sticking as much. Um so there's been some feedback along those lines. Um but primarily because uh we are going to uh have our para- para educators uh join us for a full professional development day. That's based on the new contract that we have where there's additional professional development time. Um and having two full days uh with our para educators, uh as well as our professional educators on the Monday and Tuesday of that week, um based on some of the work we're doing, whether whether that's relative to setting expectations, some of the work we're doing with the PBIS and and collaborative problem solving, um and having, building some momentum over a two-day period with our staff before the students enter school to begin, uh we think is a a good move. Uh so that's the recommendation for uh the next year's calendar, um that's different than than this year. Um the other change is that, and we typically switch this year to year uh in November, uh when we do have an election day in early November, that is a day we typically designate as the parent conference day uh for grades uh pre-K to eight. And uh for some special, there's some special subjects in the high school to have that as an additional professional development day. Um there is no election this year. Uh we are required by law to observe Veterans Day as a day of no school. That uh Veterans Day, the eleventh of November, falls on a Tuesday next year or this coming year. Uh and uh so the proposal is to pair that day uh with Veterans Day uh as there's a number of families that uh may wish for a variety of reasons to have that uh block of time as far as a four-day weekend, um if they're not a part of the parent conference piece. It also just means one less uninterrupted week. Um so there's a solid three full and uninterrupted weeks then between the October uh Professional Development Day and Holiday. And then uh uh November can get choppy sometimes with the Election Day and Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. So that's a that's a change compared to this year. Uh otherwise, it it follows the same approach. It does restore uh two days of no school for kindergarteners uh in April and May. We tried a different approach um to doing that. We we, there's always been our preschool uh approach. Um but our our K to four principals uh felt that the way of doing it previously was working better. So that uh would be uh a change compared to this year, but restores a longstanding practice we've had in the district before that. Um and the other change from this year to next year is that uh we did have a professional, um an early release Professional Development Day um in January this year. Um there was consensus among the leadership team that that uh coming back from the December vacation and then quickly having a half-day uh after that was not optimal. Um so moving that, leaving January alone and and moving that day to a May date um as we had in some previous years, that's a that's a restoration of a previous practice as well. Um so otherwise, the vast majority of the calendar remains the same. Um as I mentioned, uh obviously, feedback, any feedback the school committee wants to provide this evening, uh we'll send it out to the community. We'll listen to any feedback. We're engaging with the uh employee groups, the uh SPA and SEA um as we uh do to get any feedback they have about the proposal. Um and uh we'll bring a final proposal to you at your next meeting uh for a vote so that we can let people know what the calendar looks like for next school year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions or comments about the calendar?
No.
Okay. I definitely invite the public to uh uh provide their feedback uh to the school committee through email uh over the next couple of weeks until our next meeting on March twelfth. Definitely like to get your perspective. If you have any concerns, please reach out to us um by the March twelfth meeting. Uh thank you so much. Uh the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on February twelfth, uh twenty twenty-five are enclosed. Any revisions or edits to recommend, there being none, they'll be accepted as written. And then we do need to go into executive session tonight. Uh therefore, I need to request a motion to adjourn into executive session, A, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grants and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-two, F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares purpose three. Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and or administrators, purpose two. And D, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grants and aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts Student Record laws, purpose seven, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call and vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Riffaboo?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.